PM, the year is 2020. Uh, the work session of the city council, the city transit ed will now come to order. This is a uh go-to meeting. Uh, so we have, of course, two items to discuss tonight. One is discussion regarding marijuana consumption clubs. And uh item two is land use code review. Uh, I think what we're gonna do is, cause the land use code is gonna take up some time, so I think we'll probably do that in reverse and do the land use code first. But when we get to the uh discussion of the marijuana consumption clubs, uh for council, you've probably noticed that uh there is the consumption club issue as well as the delivery uh bill that is was included. And I talked to Les, and what we're going to do tonight is we are not going to discuss anything about the delivery, cause that will come up at a later date. We believe that the other part is gonna take up another bit of time. So uh let's go ahead and get started with the land use code review. Um Carrie, I know that you put a consolidated draft of some of the changes, and of course council may have some questions as we go along. So uh Carrie, if you want to go ahead and get started and kind of give us an update of anything, any changes, any other changes, or what are your thoughts? Need to unmute yourself. No, you're, you're still muted, Carrie. Carrie, if you wanna try calling in on the telephone, on your cellphone, that might, that might be the best.
Good morning.
Audra is uh, can you hear anything from the telephone, Carrie?
Yeah.
No, it's not. I am the speaker. I don't know if I'm on.
Okay, can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay.
We've got a little echo, but we can deal with it. Okay, why don't you go ahead and fill us in as to any other thoughts that you might have, or anything you want to bring us up to date on?
Absolutely. Is there anyone who can share my screen? Can the center let me organize and let me share my screen?
Uh, that would be Audra.
Audra, can you talk now?
There's a screen below you, you can't see it.
Yeah, I can see it. Okay, now. Okay, can everybody see my screen?
Yes.
All right, that works. So uh, can I just briefly provide a project overview? Um, this is our people who are involved in the process. We will go over what we're doing with the year of class. From council, in regards to the community permit to A U should be contained through over and over again.
We're getting, we're getting some echoes in there. I'm not sure why.
The echo is occurring because of a speaker on her computer. It's been turned out.
Hey, did you uh turn your speaker off, Carrie?
Yeah, Carrie, if you're just able to turn your volume all the way down, use the audio from your phone, then I think we won't have a issue.
Hey guys, uh Mike Dimer with Colorado Canada Stories here. I've been a participant in a number of these meetings so far. The way that these meetings typically done is the administrator will usually un-vu to who now is speaking, so you just have one person speaking at a time, and then everyone else's microphones aren't there picking up what they're saying and then echoing it back. That's just what I've experienced, the way.
Thank you, Mike. Yeah, I think the issue right now is actually that her cellphone and her uh computer speaker are both projecting, and we can't really use her speaker. That is correct.
I actually think it's lost the connection.
Yeah, it looks like that. Can't do it now. Hey, I'm gonna take the opportunity to do that as well. Something's wrong with my uh connection here. It's frozen. I'll be right back.
We have a problem.
You know, while we're waiting? Hello? Carrie?
Okay, can you hear me?
Yes, much better.
Okay, I turned off my turner. Is the echoing going away?
Yeah, it seems like it did.
Okay, perfect. So, um, thank you for marrying with me. I'm used to doing two calls, but not as um well working in those meetings, so I apologize for that. So during this uh project, we first kicked off uh doing an analysis of your A U regulations. We were creating a G I S database, that's geographic information system, and it provides the ability to do a lot of analysis and those types of things. And we also created a zoning map. And throughout the process, we did code modules, and there are basically little sections of the code update, instead of having just one uh big review of a large document. So that occurred over um, over the past two years. And we've also had a number of work sessions with the county zoning variance department, as well as council, and as being city staff input. So what I'd like to do is really walk through some of the changes that we made since our last work session. This was back in February, uh since I was with you guys in person. This was pre-COVID time, so here we are. So we had a lot of discussions about the facilities permit expiration, um uh, you know, when that would occur. And so we set, we kind of cleared up um the tax as far as making sure that there's clear definition of what operational means. And we provided that definition, as you can see on my screen here in purple. So we also included this draft definition in the definition section at the end of these codes. But it basically needs to fit, that this is like the proof, the building permit, if one is actually required, has been issued, then there's inactive or if the building permit is active, or there's been a certificate of occupancy that is warranted. And then we also um added some clarified language. We say that the C P operator may extend, uh they request up to uh three one year extension. So that string line, that language definitely fits into my council members there. So accessory dwelling units, we set forth some regulations to really implement the housing goals in the comprehensive plan. And so in this version that you see, we added an extension between a tax accessory dwelling unit and E tax, because uh there could be an instance where some people would like to remodel their basement, or you know, add on to their house. And so we set forth some standards to address that. And basically what we did is really refer to industry standards, so we're really looking forward to um any input that you have. If you know some community members, some homes that you have A Us, but we went with what standard in the industry, which is uh having a maximum square footage percentage in of the primary dwelling, which we came to as forty percent. So we're really looking forward to uh getting some input from council on that. We also used our uh G I S database to take a real close look at what would be the appropriate size for E tax A Us. So we found that the average block size used to be twenty five acres. And when we looked at um all the blocks, we kind of looked at lots that were, you know, twenty two by acres, and we said, okay, what is the typical size of home on that type of block? And so there, there was a bit of range, uh one thousand to fourteen hundred square feet. I will say, there is a lot, there's a lot of diversity in your housing or in your um, uh true block sizes and those types of things. So G I S was really helpful in allowing us to figure out what your average block size was. So these next few graphics really show um, or provide you a little hope with a feel of what some areas uh recommendation or uh what standards that have been included or that is considered in the past for A Us. So for this particular one, this is in a Indian neighborhood. Um, so it's uh pretty much in the middle of the block between Willow and San Juan Street uh on Candice Avenue. And this is a twenty two five acre block, and it has a fourteen hundred square foot house on it. And I know when we met last time, we talked about, well, I don't know, we didn't know if eight hundred square feet would really fit with the community. And so we just talked a little bit about maybe a thousand square feet would, would work, or uh how would that look? So this graphic gives you an idea of what in a thousand square foot A U would look like on an average block size in the Indian neighborhood. Then we took a look at the eight hundred fifty square foot A U that we had discussed before, so a little bit smaller. And with it being a little bit smaller, um that would allow for a potential for a shed. Um, just kind of blur it up a little bit better. Um, I would actually say two hundred square foot shed. So um, that gives you a little bit of context there. And then last but not least, if you'll see, we um carried forward the um, the uh draft uh requirement of having the A U limited to forty percent of the primary dwelling unit. And so that with the fourteen hundred square foot home, that puts you at five hundred and sixty square feet, that forty percent. And then that still would allow um a little garage. And that, it would be kind of a tight garage though. It would be um, you know, like a twenty four by twenty four. But it, it would accommodate a two car, but it would be pretty tight. So that gives you uh some visuals, I hope, as we talk through some of those um changes, those potentials. Then next, we talked about kitchen containers. We incorporated the ordinance um two oh eighty seven in the regulations. And then we uh set forth some uh standards that really brush new containers to be used in more on a permanent basis. And so we broke that down into some standards for them, if they were living units, as well as if they're in an industrial setting. And, and we really modeled it after what Buffalo does, and particularly in an industrial setting, if there's high budget visibility or low visibility. We also really heard from staff during our app. They said there was uh a listed categorization of parking and storage of residential vehicles, camper trailers, and both of those types of things. And so we set forth some general standards, um rules limited, or make sure that most they were used for dwelling purposes, for homes. And uh we set forth some limitations for your consideration on uh on uh street parking, as well as for picking those types um of vehicles in the mobile residential zone district. And then so last but not least, we did incorporate the, we recently adopted ordinance on murals into the code. And uh for your, for your consideration, we also revised the definition of murals. And we revised that to make sure we compliant. And when I say re-compliant, that's the Supreme Court ruling that ensures that um all signage is content neutral. And so um that, that definition, that probably is really just refine it and make sure that it was content neutral. And then uh we did wanna make sure that um hardwares were, as you say, are all over town. And we wanted to make sure that it was really expressed in the code that hardwares are allowed as except for E Us. So we made sure that that would be included in there as well. Uh, the only thing that I did have a slide on is that um we did hear that short-term rental um, that the policy directive wishes to eliminate them from the code, and we have done that, so you do not find that if you get a press through um on that. So with the next step, we'd like to take any feedback that we've heard um tonight and incorporate it into the draft. I do want to note, to mention that we uh do send uh the telecommunications regulation to um one of our uh recent applicants that um wanted to do work with wireless telecommunications facility, and they are studying for uh some comments. Um, we did get a red, some red lines from them, uh but uh what we're gonna do is have them provide that in, in a letter, so we can assert that in half-legal, half-let. Um, and Carmen gives that a key, because there's specific regulations um for telecommunications from a legal standpoint, with shock box and those types of things, that we need them to weigh in on. And so once we get those final comments uh from the industry, we'll, we'll send those over to legal for review. Then we do some final code testing. This is really important. It's great. We get your feedback, what your best feels, and uh what you heard from the community, use it in the red, so we can test and make sure that there's no conflicts and those types of things. Then the last thing that we do is refine our final definitions. We finalize our formatting, make sure cross-references are accurate, everything are um all working properly, and it was important to be adoptionary. So with that, I'd be happy to answer any questions that council may have.
Okay, let's go ahead and get started. Ms. Ogletree, do you have any questions or anything you'd like to add to, take away?
I have a real simple question, I think, and no the answer.
Well, that would be?
Talking about A Us, Carrie, well, on the forty percent, when you say square footage on multi-level uh dwellings, is that square footage of the main, main floor or the total of multiple levels of the, of uh dwelling? It would be the group, no, all levels? Okay.
Ms. Ogletree?
I have one.
Ms. Oglet, let's go ahead and down the line, Ms. Ogletree?
Carrie, the murals are gonna be classified the same.
Rust, Rusty, Rusty, let's go ahead and go down the line, so I can keep track of everybody here.
Excuse me, I'm sorry. I see the mayor's mouth moving, but he was muted. Councilor Goodall, I heard you. Mayors, there was something you wanted to say?
Yeah, go ahead, Rusty. I'll let you. Mine was muted temporarily.
Yes, sir. I didn't mean to interrupt everybody.
So Carrie, the, the murals are classified, this means the sign then?
No, just the definition of mural.
But if you're saying we have to fall in compliance with the RE decision in the Supreme Court on content, that's the same as signs?
Um, yes, because the, the, it, it kind of ties into what the uh works of art and, and making sure that we clarify how the um, the signs uh work in that regard. And so that's why we wanted to make sure that um we have the, there's no possible conflict with the RE decision, and we feel uh making the um integrity of that definition.
If, if I could please interject, I'm sorry, Councilor Goodall, I just wanted to say, you're absolutely right. A mural could run afoul of the requirements of being content neutral. There could be things that a mural says, and, and still it's a very important consideration. And, and we, you know, we're going to further expound upon that as we do more with the, the city's mural policy. But Carrie, I do want you to know that um we recently have dealt with murals on a very limited basis, that is to, we're headed murals in the historic preservation portion of the downtown, a kind of a very strong possession uh in, in order to have that document was, that murals would be allowed with very strict controls, and, and very, very tight control by, by council and others in other parts of downtown. Some contributing H P zone district buildings are forbidden. Uh, they're, you know, they would be allowed, but they would be allowed in certain areas, you know, with tight controls that were posted downtown. I just wanted to let you know that. I'm sorry for interrupting everybody.
No, no, that, that's great question. Just to be you at a comfort level, we did incorporate ordinance two oh ninety nine into these regulations, so, so they are in there. The only thing that we need to do is the definition of mural.
Anything else, Rusty?
No, I think that's all I had.
Okay, Ms. Ogletree?
On the mural definition, can you hear me all right?
Yes.
Okay, the mural definition, I, I think there, yes, I, when there says work or art, is it supposed to be work of art in the definition of mural?
It has to be work of art.
Okay, um, yeah, that would be. I, you know, I, I'm pressed with all of the theater process that this is required. Um, I think this is a great, I was wondering if um, a couple, what, the short-term rental policy directive, did it miss something? Cause I, I obviously don't remember us directing, city council directing that that, that could be included, and I, I may have missed something along. Understand that better.
Uh, sure, when we were working through staff, we, we uh heard that, that the desire was to uh not regulate short-term rentals, which a lot of communities choose to do that. Um, and so that, that's why it was, it was taken out. But if you would like us to go back and put them back in, we can do that. We, we had, I, we had regulations that we were not working on prior consideration before.
I remembered that, and I just have a perception that a decision had been made we were not going to regulate them, um, and just, uh, so I was surprised to find that in there. Um, I, I spent a lot of time trying to compare this proposed uh version with current code, and trying to kind of understand the organization, what significant differences there are. But I wondered if you could maybe give us a general thumbnail sketch of what is significantly different about this compared to what we had before? Um, what your overall policy objectives were in terms of preparing this document and direction that you've been given from the council about?
Hey, Erin, uh Erin, Erin, this is Phil, and Les, you might wanna chime in here. Uh, Les and I have had a minor discussion on that. And one of the things is, is that, sure, the short-term rentals is still um up in the air as to whether we want to regulate that at this point in time. So I think some more discussion, I think council has to have, is going to have to have more discussion. We can always insert this down the road. Uh, Les, do you have any comment with that?
No, Mayor, other than you're absolutely right, and I think that Carrie was absolutely carrying out our, our desires that they, is that currently um exist. And that is, you know, staff, I, I feel confident in saying this, cause I've had a number of conversations, our recommendation, councilmen's going to be, the less wading into that area you do, the better it's going to be. Some kind of the unregulated hands-off policy, but it's, that currently exists is what we're going to do it. But also councilman Ogletree's, that must be correct. I don't know, because it hasn't been discussed by council, there hasn't been real direction given, but the way it, it stands right now, and our desires are in terms of staff, are going to have it in that, that form, that is to be largely, almost entirely unregulated. Sorry for that long answer, Mayor.
Well, the other thing too is, once we regulate it, it comes in, I mean, there's a whole, you know, we get into a bigger issue and a lot more discussion. So uh just to let everybody know, that's going to be on, and the short-term rentals is going to be on an upcoming uh count, uh work session anyhow. So we'll probably make a decision at that point, how to move forward with it, and whether we want to insert it in the land use code or not. Any other questions, Ms. Ogletree?
My, my larger question was, what was the philosophy going into looking at current code and how it was shaped up?
Uh, you broke up. You're breaking it quite a bit.
Okay, um, my, my other question was kind of a general one about what the philosophy behind the current um, the land use code was, how it was proposed, has been changed from our current one? Just so I can get that back for you.
Les, you wanna answer that?
I'm happy, sure, I'm, I'm happy to do that. So with this subdivision regulation, uh, a lot did not change. We took a lot of the design standards and those types of things. It didn't really mess with us, as we heard from the community, that, that, that what they had was working really well. What we did do is work on the organization and um, make it more clear to follow. We set forth a condominiumization process, um, and this was to implement the comprehensive plan, in that we wanted to, the community wanted to make sure that, that um, that the beautiful historic buildings downtown uh could be condoed and sold off so that we can um generate and attract investments. And so um, so we created a real streamlined process to do that. We created a step-by-step process for all of the review processes. Um, we set forth clear, submitted requirements, review criteria. We created a block plan process, which basically city staff would do anyway, and this is basically requiring a site plan for single-family and complex-type developments that comes along with their building permit. So it's really streamlined, spacing for the sites, and created a site plan process, and this is more. And this is more for multi-family and commercial and industrial type, um, applications. We also set for runaway vacation and dedication process, that really simplified the application requirement, and that's mainly what we did for subdivision. Um, for zoning, uh, we provided the, uh, user-friendly table for the, for the users as well as the seven-dimensional standard. We created a new zone district called Turbative Use, and that was again to implement the comprehensive plan because pretty much all of the Canyons, what we heard from the community is they really wanted to, um, have a land designation that would attract, um, would give the conversation of attracting, um, some of the values and types of systems that, that, um, Trinidadians like to, um, wellness and, um, recreation and allow for mixed use. And it's a straight zone district, so it really provides for some flexibility there for golf course or staples or, you know, any it's beautiful out there. So, um, we really created a flexible zone district for that. Um, we worked, we are on a traditional permit process with staff. And as you've seen, uh, also in the latest version, we've gotten a lot of great input from, uh, council as well on that. Uh, we also set forth a process, um, for, uh, other community directives as far as adding some flexibility. Um, we set forth some administrative adjustment provisions, um, uh, you know, because there's, and I said it earlier, there's a lot of, um, diversity in like your block type, and facilities and those types of things. So we wanted to make sure that the, the staff had the ability to really look at these situations and not have to go through a proper process on everything that you guys, um, have going on. Um, we created a whole new article for new specific standards. And again, um, this is, this isn't really much new. We just, uh, reorganized a lot of the regulations and put them all in one place that really needs done. And so there, you'll see things, uh, you'll see there right there for, um, cell communication. Um, we ran state to sidewalk, where you can have maybe guys at the border, not taking out some last draft. Um, uh, we modernized your global home and added some tiny home regulations. Modernized your wireless cell communications facilities, and of course addressed accessories dwelling units, which was something that was really important that needed to be addressed in terms of implementing the comprehensive plan. Um, we also set forth, uh, a new article for new design standards. And again, we didn't come up with that much new stuff. It was more organizing it in one appropriate place, so everything that has to do with design is included there. So in this chapter, you'll see parking, landscape requirements, streams, then being sidewalks, trails, then exterior lighting and architecture. So, um, we added annexation regulations in your codes before you said, oh, defer to Colorado revised statutes, but that's what we noticed, since we provide development review services for the city for the last seven years. And so we've really noticed that with annexation, applicants kind of have a hard time figuring out what that means. So we went ahead and just, um, included the standards there. From your sign regulations, the biggest key there is we went through and made the content integral, did really change a lot of the requirements there. Um, we had a new article on affordable housing, and, um, this again, uh, is really just to implement the comprehensive plan, and it's really incentivizing. So it's not, um, uh, it, it's, it's pretty flexible and it's really all based on, and then last but not least, we added a definition section, but again, we took, we didn't, and we're still refining that, but the old code had like definitions all over the place. And so, um, we took all those definitions and put them in one chapter. So if anybody knows they have, they want a definition, they can go to the end of the section. So I'll be like Les, that's a long-winded answer, but, um, that's the whole code in that cell.
It was a very thorough, was that, that helpful, Erin? Because I could have wanted to get a sense of whether or not there was any aspect of how, what you were instructed to do about enforcement? Because I, I hear a lot from people in Trinidad about enforcement issues, and I'm wondering if there's anything in this new version that makes enforcement more smooth or clear or anything like that for property that doesn't comply with the requirements of a land use code, is there anything about that?
Erin, I think that that would probably be, I think that would probably be a question, probably more for Les and Mike probably than for Kerry, I would think. Is that, what do you think, Les?
Well, Kerry was in the process of fielding that, and I, I'm more than happy to weigh in, but Kerry, do you want to continue to answer councilman Ogletree's question?
Oh, sure, sure, um, thanks, please.
Thank you, ma'am.
Through this process, we've worked really closely with staff, analyzed, um, what enforcement issues that they've been encountering through this whole entire process. And, you know, the most recent example is, um, the recreational, storage of recreational vehicles and those types of things. Um, so throughout this process, we've been really cognizant with that and made sure that we're not getting forth any regulations that we, that we can't enforce and for that would cause an enforcement process. So, uh, yeah, we've been, we've worked really closely with staff, because they're the ones who are at the front line, right? And, and the big thing too is we wanted to make sure that we streamline the regulations to make sure that they're implementing them isn't an issue too. So, um, with that, if you have anything more to add, or Mike?
Well, I do, which like Mike was going to say something to you, and then Mike ended with a cut ahead of you, but I would say that there are provisions that make a number of violations citable into municipal court. There is the, um, the anti-dilapidation ordinance, is that right, the AEO ordinance, Mike? I mean, there are administrative provisions, we have a lot of, uh, existing provisions that are done either administratively or are cited into municipal court. When they're in the municipal court, they're, uh, they're my responsibility to pursue. Otherwise, they go with other people in the other departments. But Mike, go ahead, what would you say?
Um, I would just say that, uh, Kerry hit on it, where it just streamlines the couple, uh, this code, I don't know when the last time it's been updated, but it's been from nineteen seventy-three forward that, um, something comes up, we change it, we add a section, we put it over there. Um, it makes it hard for staff and for the public to understand where to find what we're supposed to be enforcing, and it makes it hard to say, yes, you can do that, and no, you can't. So, uh, this process here has streamlined it, and I think it's very valuable and will help in defining for the property owner what the rules are and how we can enforce them. So.
Very good, thank you.
Erin Ogletree, anything else, any other questions that you might have?
Not right now.
Okay, Mr. Shu.
Uh, no, she, uh, Erin kind of hit on what I was going to say about the enforcement. The only question is, uh, that I have as far as enforcement goes is, uh, we have one guy that's an inspector, Greg Robinson, is there, is he going to be able to handle all this? Uh, I mean, I'm sure people are going to do stuff illegally and that, and are we going to be able to pick that up and, and really, how are we going to do the administration part, Mike?
So it's, it's pretty much as, as it is, we have our code enforcement officer with the EEO, we have Ken, and, uh, we have our planning department. So, um, we feel calls from the public, they're out of the bound, they see it. Um, again, like I said before, I think this tool is going to help streamline the process and, um, so I, I, I think we'll be on it.
The other question is, uh, it goes to the planning commission and stuff. Can they amend any of this, uh, regulations or stuff that we have here to fit the desired need for someone?
They can't amend the code. There are certain areas in which they can consider a vary, or variances permitted, but they can't overlook or, or change the code.
Okay, that's what I was asking. Thank you.
Yeah, anything, any, any time an amendment is made, it's got to be brought, you know, in front of council. Uh, Mr. Williamson.
I had a question, um, just in general, I, I don't know who the minister would answer, but what does the path forward for this land use code look like? Um, how much longer is the period type when it's developed and then before it will be accepted?
Uh, you know, Mike and I have had a little discussion on that, and I was going to make a comment at the end of the discussion tonight to clarify that, uh, as to how, how we're going to move forward so that, um, that's probably going to be, so after, if you have any other questions, I can answer it when I, when I come up.
Okay, that's fine, then. I did, um, relating to what councilman Shu just asked, after this is, um, adopted, uh, and, um, put into practice, let's say something changes drastically, who knows what it is, but, um, the procedure for changing something in it would just be through, uh, an amendment to city council?
Correct.
Okay, um, I have.
This, this is Mike, it'll generally run through planning commission for, for their regulations, they'll go up to the council for a change, probably via an ordinance. So, um, I think everyone involved will, uh, be involved to think through it and submit a well-thought-out, uh, change if it's needed.
And it won't be, I just, I need your... Sure, and I know, I know our goal is to put in place something that's, um, well-bought-out, uh, all-encompassing and as close to final as possible. I'm just wondering if, uh, the need ever did arise with the next year's construction laws. Those are the only questions I have, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, uh, you know, in answer to your questions there, something will always come up, uh, or someone will always try to circumvent the process that we're going to have to deal with and make an amendment of some sort. So that's going to be an ongoing process from here to eternity, basically, as long as, you know, the city of Trinidad is here and we're using a land use code. As far as, uh, adopting this, what we're going to do is, according to Mike, he would like to take this after tonight, uh, make any minor revisions, and then bring it in front of council for adoption. Of course, we've got to go through the proper steps of the ordinance to change it so that we can adopt this here in short term. We have been working on this for a few years now, and, uh, you know, Mike and I are, have the belief that it's time to move forward with it, make any adjustments, uh, like you were thinking about, Mr. Williamson, that may come up, uh, and make those changes as time goes on. Like I said, we, we can't think of everything upfront, but, uh, there'll be some minor things that may come up that we're going to have to deal with after the fact. Uh, I do have a couple of questions for Kerry. Uh, one of the things that I have is, and maybe council might have some concerns with this too, were questions on storage containers, there's a hundred and eighty day maximum. And, uh, I was looking to try to find out, is how do we handle long-term construction? We'll give you the example we have, for instance, currently, and of course, they're on the downhill slide, but like the space to create project, that's a year. Uh, the hospital, that's taking probably a year, maybe a little better. The Fox Theater, that's going to come up, that's going to take many, many years. And if there's any storage containers, uh, to be used, how do we handle goes? And what about multiples? In other words, two or three or four or five storage containers on a particular construction project? Kerry, do you have an idea of how we should handle that?
Um, we can handle the storage containers to be used as, it sounds like you're, you're referencing more construction trailers, kind of?
Yes.
Oh, okay.
And Mayor, if I could please, while, while there's a pause, I, I believe that our existing ordinance regarding those containers applies primarily to residential areas. Like you nod in the affirmative or negative, if I, okay, thank you, that's reassuring. And so construction, even in residential, it is for a hundred and eighty days, unless a person has such container petitions or an extension, and they can demonstrate that construction is ongoing. I think that in a commercial construction zone, people would be permitted to have those cargo containers as a construction container, provided that the contractor, the person doing the construction, agreed that the container would be tempered, which obviously would be, because it would be in connection with the construction project. Does that help?
Yeah, the reason why I bring that up, because I, I may be wrong, but I don't have that document right in front of me, but I thought it says residential and industrial in, in, in verbiage, but that would be something to check into. Uh, the other thing, I'm not sure, Kerry, if there is a typo on page eighty-six, five point three, I think at the end, and at the end it says BOT, I'm not sure what that'll mean, so you might check into that. Uh, the other question I have, and this is for council, is about the parking, it says forty-eight hours of parking, uh, maximum time. Uh, I don't know if council feels like maybe that should be longer period of time that, uh, they have to keep a moving before they can bring that vehicle back to that same parking place. Forty-eight hours is basically only two days, and they're going to try to circumvent that somehow. And, uh, the last item that I have, I have one more item after this, something that always concerned me, because I've heard this, not around here, but in other parts of the country and the state where, uh, you know, for instance, the Girl Scout cookie stands, where you have little kids that have lemonade stands, and all of a sudden, uh, the code enforcement shows up and they tear down a lemonade stand that a, a young lady or a young man is trying to sell lemonade or Girl Scout cookies, and they're removing them. How do we, I, I don't want to see that happen to these young kids. What can we do with something like that?
And there was a state law that was passed, I think, a year, maybe two years ago, that , um, puts some limitations in place where if it's a, somebody under the age of eighteen and they're operating it under so many days, that, um, they don't have to get a business license even.
Okay, I just wanted to see, okay, I'm glad you have that answer. And Kerry, this is the last thing, and something that, uh, you know, you brought up, that of course, short-term rentals have been taken out for the obvious reason. Uh, murals, we're going to be discussing coming up shortly. Uh, the other thing too is, we're going to be discussing after this, uh, is, are the consumption clubs for marijuana as well as the delivery for marijuana. So according to the, um, code, those items, the consumption clubs, it just says consumption clubs, it's prohibited at this point in time. So being that we're going to maybe give that some consideration, one way or the other, how do we handle that going forward?
Yeah, when, when we embarked on this process, uh, we had worked with, with lab and council and TDD on marijuana regulations that you have for you today, and you're absolutely correct that, um, consumption clubs are prohibited now. Um, and, and it's really good that you also pointed out that the land use regulations, they're not in stone, um, that they will be updated, um, just when you do, you hurt of everything, things change. So, um, rest assured that, that there will be a time of the day where you might want to change your regulations. rest assured that, that there will be a time of the day where you might want to change your regulations. Um, we have not been asked to, uh, weigh in on consumption clubs and, and address it at all, but that's something that we definitely, um, help out with and, um, if we get, uh, if there's some direction or short-term rentals, we're happy to, um, uh, incorporate those uh, into the current regulations. Uh, we did in the, the February tenth draft, we did that force, um, short-term rental, um, um, uh, regulations that were, uh, on the, on the side of very, very flexible. And so, uh, I think that would be a good starting point if, if, since we did hear that you guys were, were, uh, not really wanting to regulate them heavily. I, I understand now with COVID and whatnot, it's not an emergency situation to, to address them, but it's, uh, at least you have something in your pocket that, that you can, um, start with.
Yeah, and like I said, the other thing that's coming up behind this, the consumption club is the, the delivery aspect, which is going to take effect in January of twenty twenty-one. I think medical right now can be delivered, but we've not, uh, I think we've put a moratorium on all that, I believe, I'm not sure. But anyway, uh, delivery is going to be available for recreational, I believe, in twenty twenty-one, so, uh, those are four items I think that we're going to have to have some further discussion on. Uh, with that being said, uh, any other questions from council at this point in time? Mike, do you have anything to add?
I do not, Mayor.
Les, do you have anything?
I do not, Mayor, thank you.
Carrie, do you have anything else that you might want to add?
The only other thing that I was hoping to get some direction on, how is council feeling about the ADU regulations that they are today? Is that something that, do you, by these graphics, does it help with the life set to go with a thousand square feet or eight fifty or just give permitting to a percentage of the primary building? Are there any thoughts?
I think we can get pretty, I think we can get pretty deep and add on, I think, let's, let's take two numbers here. I'm not sure if, if council wants to have a deeper discussion. One was eight hundred and one was, you know, a thousand feet. Uh, start with Ms. Ogletree, do you have any?
I, I think because you faced this on a quarter acre lot, I think that's what you said, was an average of lots in the city, I think if a lot is significantly larger, that the limit, the upper limit of a thousand feet might be, um, not, I think that should be more flexible if the lot is larger.
Uh.
And so what we, what we have set forth, um, Councilwoman Ogletree, is we have, we originally suggested, just drew out there, because it's your community, we need input from you, was eight fifty, and then we heard, well, that might be a little bit too small. And so, we also heard that you guys wanted some flexibility, and so that's why we set forth, hey, we'll have a limit of one thousand square feet for forty percent of the primary dwelling unit. But I provide, whatever is left, we can provide you with that, that, that flexibility there.
Carrie, this, I just thought, I had, I just had a thought on something, maybe what we could do is go with the, I would say, go with the minimum of eight fifty and maybe up to a thousand with that flexibility, but allow, uh, administration to do that administratively due to the size of the lot. Is that something that, uh, council would want to consider?
I was just suggesting that it might be larger than a, a limit of a thousand, a high limit of a thousand if the lot would accommodate it, and that, I think, could be an administrative decision within limits, I mean, not building a whole other house on the lot or anything like that, but I, I just think it might be, that might be too tight, uh, for some lots that are larger.
I agree.
Well, we can always, what I, what I remember hearing and, and I heard it through, uh, a lot of our, uh, inputs, is the comprehensive plan update as well, is that, uh, you know, we, we want to be flexible, um, we're very unique and, and we wanted to make sure that, that any kind of accessory dwelling unit really were existing character with the existing neighborhood and, and, and the existing house. And so, um, maybe it would be good to, to have it based on the percentage of the house and, and not the function of the lot, you know? And, and then you can add in your administrative provision, um, some additional flexibility in implementing that. Is that something that might work?
Uh, Carrie, you know, this, this is something, and I'll mention, this is from my perspective. Uh, you know, I have a lot, I got two and a half acres and I have, you know, close to a three thousand square foot home. And, you know, if I wanted to put another three thousand square foot home ADU unit on it, doesn't make sense to me, so I think there's got to be some limitations. Now, what are you seeing in other jurisdictions? Who are they using?
They're using six hundred to eight fifty.
Okay.
And, and they have also, uh, a percentage forty, forty is really what we typically see, forty percent of the primary structure, whichever is left.
Okay.
And that's why it's just got out there initially, for you guys to consider.
Well, and the other thing to consider is, you know, the ADU unit, what is its purpose? Is that, you know, is that a?
Right, and.
Brother-in-law's home, grand, you know, grandfather's home?
Right, right, and, and that was the whole thing with, um, with the council plan update was, hey, we want to have, we want people to be able to aid this place, right? We want our kids to go to where they call us to come back. We want, you know, they might not want to move in with mom and dad, but if they, if they're with the ADU, they might move in there, you know what I mean? So, um, it, it, it's not one site that's all site, I mean, um, we could, uh, give it a, uh, you know, just, it's tied to the size of, of, you know, primary residence and, and that, if that was, is that staying in character? And then we could step forth the range, there's all, there's other avenues that they have to be, right? So, you have to meet their step-up requirement, so you have to block coverage requirement. Still have the requirement in there that no more than seventy-five percent of the lot can be covered with the structure related, right? So, we have those checking options in place, so, um, you know, it's really what you, uh, what your community desires, uh, what you, what you like to see.
Well, let's get some input, uh, from, uh, Mr. Shu, what are your thoughts?
Well, I think you just make it simple and go with eight hundred and, and if there's an issue there and the administration could pass to a thousand, uh, you know, we can go all day doing this, but.
Right.
We, we set some standards, I think, eight hundred and then have, if, if there's an issue there that they want a thousand feet, then the administration should be able to handle that, they'll know more about it than we do.
I agree. Um, Ms. Gregor.
I, I kind of tend, you know, I, I look at houses all the time, square footage. Thousand square foot houses are, are structured, there's pretty good sized structure, you know, there. So, I, I'm tending to go to the eight fifty with some type of mechanism that if we wanted to, we could increase it, but, you know, you look at this, this diagram that Carrie put up here, almost every lot in this diagram has some other type of structure on it. And if you compare just by eyeballing those, those are about eight fifty and, and look how much space they take on those lots.
Yeah.
I, I'm more inclined to the eight fifty.
Ms. Gregor.
Yeah, I like the eight fifty or forty percent and leaving an administrative, uh, deal in there where we could take into account special circumstances.
Mr. Williamson.
I, um, agree, I think a thousand square foot home, I mean, that's a pretty large structure. Most, I think a lot of, uh, single wide trailers, um, are not even that large, but, uh, what I'm thinking is, I think we limit it to eight fifty with a mechanism to go larger, but I think there needs to be very specific standards as to how to do that and that's probably a, a heavy lift to get done, but, um, that's my vote, eight fifty. If I had to say without limitation, I'd say we would at eight fifty.
You know, my, from my end, I, I like the eight fifty going up to a thousand, uh, being done administratively, so that kind of gives you a direction from, uh, Mike, do you feel like that would be adequate?
I do, Mayor, I, I think, uh, eight fifty and then, uh, depending on lot size and criteria, um, extend, there's a step-half can apply, um.
I, I just wanted to follow up, in terms of, uh, community, uh, neighborhood standards and things like that, I went on Colorado, there are several houses on Colorado that have guest homes that I would guess are, are larger than eight hundred fifty square feet and two stories and all sorts of things, so, as what's present in, in our community, we have larger than the hundred square foot house, especially on lots that are larger, so I just, I, I stress that, I think, uh, be driven by the size of the main house and forty percent is a limit.
Yeah, well, it sounds like, you know, just kind of consensus, there's that eight fifty up to a thousand, uh, that's what it sounds like to me, so I would recommend that, uh, Carrie, if you want to put that in place, uh, you might want to talk to Mike a little bit more about it and, uh, see if there's anything different that, uh.
So, the, the, have a range of eight fifty, two thousand square feet? Do you want, would you desire to also have this forty percent of the primary structure? Because it correlates to the size of the construction, right? Do you think, are married?
Uh, well, you take, let's say you take a three thousand square foot home and you take forty percent, that's going to be a twelve hundred square foot home, I A D U unit, I think that's too big.
Whatever's left, it's whatever's left.
Correct, because I think if someone's got an eight hundred square foot home and they want to put in, come in and build a eight hundred and fifty square foot ADU unit, that's where the forty percent, eight fifty or forty percent, whichever is less, would come into play.
Exactly.
Okay.
Yeah.
Okay, let's go with that then, okay. Any other question, any other questions from council? Okay, let's go ahead and move on to, uh, the next item, which was going to be the discussion regarding marijuana consumption clubs. Carrie, thank you for all your information and input and we'll be talking some more.
Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you.
Thanks so much, Mike.
Okay, discussion regarding marijuana consumption clubs, and, uh, like I mentioned earlier, one of the things that, uh, in your information that you received, there were consumption clubs and delivery together in there. What we're going to be discussing tonight is strictly consumption clubs and we're going to leave the delivery for another time. Uh, so let's go ahead and, Les, do you have, uh, anything or do you want to move on to, to who else? Who is going to be on from?
And, Mayor, if I could please, I, we have a, we have a presenter and.
Right.
Mr. Wallace has been instrumental in, in getting the presenter, so I'm sure that, that Wally is on and I would ask him to please introduce and tee this up and, and let you know, and I'll, I'll have a number of questions and things to say, uh, when they're done, but I think it's best if you just allow them to.
Okay.
To go ahead and present, if that's okay.
Wally, go ahead and introduce the guest.
Yep, can you all hear me?
Yes.
Yep. Okay, awesome, uh, today we have possibly multiple guests. I know for sure that Danielle Henry is on the phone and she is a representative for the Marijuana Enforcement Division. Um, we already spoke with Hank a couple of months ago, who, um, informed you all on some of the information about the new rules and, uh, we just kind of wanted to follow back up and answer some of the questions that, uh, I had written down and left with from that meeting. Uh, really, this conversation has been a little bit led by me, uh, just wanting to continue looking into this, especially as, uh, everything else related to COVID starts opening back up. I think it would be a good thing to think if we want to start looking at, trying to implement this pilot program and see if it is something that can be effective in, uh, continuing the amount of money that we are getting from the marijuana industry, um, before other states start legalizing. Um, so without any further ado, I'd like to introduce Danielle and, um, really, she's mainly just here to address some of your questions, which had to do with, uh, the taxes will be covered in this, uh, what insurance liability will be with it, um, if there's any training for programs and other questions that you all had left us with last time.
Uh, Danielle, why don't you go ahead and, uh, just kind of fill us in as to what you are thinking that we need to know?
So, I'm Danielle Henry, I'm a policy advisor with the Marijuana Enforcement Division and I work with the division on their legislative and rulemaking efforts and I also work with the external stakeholders through that process. The marijuana hospitality, the, like you've got, very from Hank, previously creates the two license types, one that allows sale, one that does not, may also be mobiles. There's a lot of opportunities for a local jurisdiction to really kind of decide what's best for their community and what fits them. The state did release, and they are enacted now in, as of January one, and those are kind of your guidelines. Um, if they're really here to answer your guys' questions, which you need from us, you guys can go beyond what the state has done and become stricter or, you know, just really kind of make this the core vision for Trinidad. Um, I don't have anything else to add to that, so if you guys have questions, I will leave this question.
Les, why don't you go ahead and, uh, you have questions?
Okay, I do, and Danielle, hi, I'm Les.
Hi, Les.
Hi there, so let me begin by asking you, you know, when these, when this conversation kind of began, we were talking about these things in theory, we refer to them as consumption clubs and kind of like, you know, sampling or, you know, tasting, or, so I, I understand, I have the materials in front of me, I know you may all refer to marijuana hospitality business and a retail marijuana hospitality and sales, is that correct?
Correct, yes, and the consumption club, you know, could kind of lift over from the legislation that you're prior to. This year's legislation is a little bit different than that, but.
Okay.
Public consumption marijuana.
Okay, and so I know, and forgive me if I get this wrong, but I've been trying to figure this out, so that marijuana hospitality business is where a consumption club would go. I mean, that, that is a consumption club, is that correct?
Yes.
Okay, good, and a consumption club, I, I understand, um, you know, because it's in the outline, it gets actually right in the, in there, I mean, in, in the, one sentence, that a consumption club can be mobile, meaning, so, so that falls into, we used to have like buses and drive around, people would party and do that, but they were going to get a license, that a consumption club can be mobile, so you could have like a taxi or a bus, it would be a consumption club that could obtain this license type, correct?
So, yes, so the, that would be the mobile premise and then each of those buses or taxis or whatever the vision is, would be a separate license premise, if that makes sense, so that would be the one.
Sure, okay, so if it was a mobile, uh, license, that would be a different license type from a stationary, uh, you know, building, more room building, consumption club?
So, it's an option for, so, yeah.
Okay, all right, that makes sense.
No requirements, yeah.
Okay, so then the retail marijuana hospitality and sales business, that is what we're talking about, like hotels, restaurants, and even, if I understand correctly, retail marijuana stores having an area where people could consume marijuana, correct?
So a hospitality within the sales model is
Oh, right, right, okay.
So it allows for sales within the consumption space. Those are limited, certain amount, and then also only one transaction a day. So it wouldn't be, it wouldn't be like a bar where you go and you consume multiple top, multiple beers with multiple transactions.
Okay. The only difference between the two, one of them, you bring your own in smoke, one of them, you buy what they sell in smoke, and you can't.
Okay.
That's the only difference.
Okay, good point. And I guess, you know, it, conceptually, I don't have a, what I have a problem with is having a freestanding, independent consumption club. And I don't have a problem with the notion, I understand it's, it's equal now. It just seems like it would be very hard for anyone to make money off of that kind of business, off of that kind of business. I mean, with, with all the expenses it would have, and I know that's not for me to, you know, figure out or decide if anyone could, could make a go of that or not. But can I ask, in those kind of independent, freestanding consumption clubs, how many of those do we have in the state of Colorado right now?
So the last time that I checked, I know that we have one in Denver. And then there are two, I believe, in Colorado Springs, and there might be a fourth one, I'm not sure, that are, that are operating. Um, if Hank is on, he might have a better idea, but that's my understanding.
Good.
Are there, are there, are there any in the pipeline that you know of?
Uh, not that I know of. That, that would be a question for our licensing team. I know there's a couple other communities who are kind of in the same process that you guys are. And trying to determine what's best for them and their regulations. Each community is going about that differently, and I think that's what allowed the holdup to spin.
Uh, Hank, go ahead and chime in, please.
And he made that, that is.
Um, yeah, so, so the, kind of the longest, uh, you know, longest operating example we have of that was probably the Colorado Springs. And I can't really, you know, answer to the revenue or what it did, because for really most, almost the entirety of their, their operation has been unlicensed. So we've not been there as a division and, uh, you know, not, not oversaw their, their, um, operations. But we've always heard from the owners at the time that they really did want hospitality and sales because of that as more of a revenue creator.
Right, right.
Um, this is my neighbor. If, if, if I might just inject here, I have some information which you guys may find valuable on this particular subject. I'm the owner and founder of Colorado Cannabis Tours, and I'm also the CEO of Puff Pass Paint. There's actually quite a few more private event companies like ourselves who find the revenue through the events that we do and the hospitality services that are offered, uh, not so much the sale of cannabis. Uh, I will support Hank in saying that the two of the springs, the two actual brick and mortar clubs that are there, um, traditionally relied upon the sale of cannabis to, uh, generate their revenue. But I personally know of, of quite a few entrepreneurs who have been successful with, uh, special event type companies that will be looking to get licenses, uh, once, once they are available to them.
Can you, can?
With special event type companies, I don't mean to interrupt, special event type companies don't seem like a business that is either, you know, that is doing this day to day. And I, I don't mean to quibble, and I, I understand, I, I, it's special events. Why do you, special events, you have a number of people coming together and you, it's like a special events liquor watch.
It depends on how you look at some special events. It's been, we operated as special events. Personally, I can speak to my company and say that they're operating at this point every single day. Now, when I started the company, when we started our models, they were weekly events, um, and we catered to tours. So we, we, we figured they would come in on the weekends. That was traditionally when we held our painting classes and our tours. But since then, we expanded to daily operations and have been in, in that mode for years. So, you know, it kind of blurs the line between, are you a special events operator? Are you a tour company? Are you a painting class? So try to conceptualize, what I like to encourage people to think about is everywhere you see alcohol being sold or consumed, that's a place where alternatively you could have cannabis consumption. And, you know, the, the profitability, again, I can attest to my company, we're, we're very, we're the most successful in our niche. And, and I, I'd like to say we do well. Um, do, do we make as much money in the dispensary? Don't. But do we employ a number of people, um, in the community to provide the services that we provide? Yes, absolutely.
Okay. And I guess for some reason in my mind, but I, I understand, you know, people consuming marijuana, you know, and we want to have places where people can, can smoke, I think, because of how much we sell and previous comments by council. I just see it as easier to visualize if it's in connection with an existing business rather than, uh, kind of a stolen animal. But, but that's just me. I, I would defer to council. I don't need to dominate the conversation. But I will have more questions to do if I can.
Okay.
Les, I, I see where you're coming from with that, and, and actually, I think you're correct. Um, if you're going to have the model that doesn't allow for cannabis sales, the entrepreneur has to figure out what is it they're actually selling in that, say, event. You know, I feel, you know, just, just, and I'll leave it off at this. Um, I know the draw that your community gets from Texas, very familiar with it.
Yeah.
And that's why I'm here on this call. I personally think that cannabis friendly hotel went extremely well. Extremely well, if you're here.
Right. We have a town which looks to the north, which is kind of in, in, you know, a, a number of things. I know counsel with Goodall is, uh, is intimately acquainted with, with this kind of thing. And that's just kind of what it seems like. Also, we're a community without a taxi service. And so if you have a place where people go to consume marijuana, you know, you better have a designated driver in your, your, you know. But, but that's also why it's so easy to imagine in connection with a hotel or a marijuana friendly hotel, I would say. I can thank you.
Yep.
Uh, Ms. Ogletree?
I, I think, uh, that it is, uh, I think, I think there is a place to market for having a place that people can go and, and use marijuana safely. Um, I, I can see hotels having an area of the outside or whatever that specifically near part of the hotel where you can do that and, and do it openly with other people, uh, not have to worry about having some run in with marijuana laws. Um, and I think as far as a taxi service, I think if we build it, Lyft and Uber would turn.
I would just inject that they probably won't do it until it's federally legal. And if you build a small company doing that there, you know, they may get bought out by them.
Okay. Uh, if there are no other questions, Ms. Ogletree, Karen? Got it, me?
I would, I'd like, yeah, I, I, yeah, I got it. I, I, give us an example of one of your, your businesses or one of your events that you do. Because I'm having a hard time visualizing what you do and how it would relate to the pawn shops here in Trinidad.
Okay, um, an easy one to, to conceptualize is Puff Pass Paint. Uh, that's kind of a sister company that we absorbed, uh, back in 2015. Actually, Heidi Keyes became my business partner, and then we brought the entire thing together. But Puff Pass Paint is a very simple concept. It's, it's, it's marijuana and painting instead of say wine and paint. I know you're all probably familiar with this, we took classes. We simply remove the sip portion, and we add, you know, the puff portion. The customers bring their own cannabis to, to these services. That's an extremely success, that's probably my most successful brand. We, you know, before coronavirus, had this in about a dozen locations nationwide. We'll see what it is after coronavirus, and we'll have to rebuild it again. But, um, it was a very strong draw for that. Our tours, those are, you know, educational and consumption friendly events, uh, and, and they're also sightseeing, right? So just imagine any sightseeing slash educational tour, like say a brewery. Well, modify that for cannabis, go into a cannabis growing facility, visit a dispensary, consume on the bus with some friends you've made along the way, and see some of the sites that the, that the community has to offer. That's a, that's the cannabis tour. We also are one of the, if not the largest, broker of four twenty friendly hotel rooms. So we act as a travel agency in, in the same breath. Customers call us and they're looking for tours and accommodations. And so we make relationships with the hotels in, in the area, uh, and so on and so forth. We go all the way to operate, you know, four twenty friendly airport pickup services. Basically, anything the consumer may ask for, all the way down to cooking classes, or we'll teach them how to cook with cannabis, um, cater chef dinners where somebody wants to have a cannabis infused meal, they provide the cannabis. We have a chef on staff who'll go and make that food for them. Like I was saying earlier, imagine anything, any service that traditionally has alcohol incorporated in it, and you can reimagine for cannabis.
Interesting. Is that answering your question, Karen?
Yeah, yeah. Um, I, you know, the marijuana industry in Trinidad has been very helpful to this. And I think they, they, um, proved themselves to be good neighbors, good business people. And, uh, I think we need to carry on the discussion with this. I, you know, I, I think it's a good idea to pursue this, I really do. It's, it's just so new, you know. I talked to somebody that's involved with the, that owns a marijuana shop here in Trinidad. And he doesn't have any more idea what we're looking at than we on council do, you know. So I'm, I'm more than willing to continue this investigation of this.
I want to buy a marijuana infused dinner for two for all of them.
Um, I'll, 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 I'll call that. I'll call, I'll call.
Okay, good.
I'll, 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 I'll.
Ms.
Just, just, right before a council meeting. Just, just come, come by on any weekend, and I'm already cooking, and there's no dog watching, like, finding my dogs.
Ms., Mr. Shu, you have any comments?
No, I, I'm not really interested about that. Uh, I, I think the marijuana business distributing here is, is good for the town and stuff, it's helped. But as far as consumption on areas and that, I'm not really for it at all.
Mr. Goodall?
So, you know, we already have hotels that are advertising as four twenty friendly. We have some of them that have remodeled and put on decks, and they hold parties. We already have the guy from the pawn shop who tried this business in his buses, but run into problems. He's probably set up waiting for something to come along to jump right back in at this, who could shuttle people. And they had that event, I don't remember what it's called, every weekend, and they had hundreds of people coming in town. And as long as they were smoking on the bus, and then they run into some problems with Charlie and, and whatnot. So we have some examples of stuff that'll work that happened before these laws were passed, that I'm sure would pop back up. I think we need to find a model, um, that'll work best for us and, and work best for how we're gonna try this. I mean, some of the shop owners that I've spoken to have talked about possibly a couple of stores going in business together to help share, um, the startup so that the cost would be less. Uh, you know, there's a lot of interest in it. I think we're foolish for not jumping on board and utilizing the, uh, tourists that are coming here for marijuana, providing them a place to go to stay here more days, to spend more money, to generate more tax dollars for this community while we have the opportunity. It's a, it's foolish, I think, to pass this up.
Mr. Williamson?
You know, um, my, my opinion on this is, um, really, um, undergoing a, a lot of flux, I would say, changing a lot. Um, I mean, on, uh, uh, my belief is, if, if you are going to, uh, stand in opposition to this, you really also have to be opposed to, um, uh, liquor consumption. And I think, you know, it's been a few years now, but I think we've moved past that. Um, obviously, the provision being repealed. But I, I think that, um, it's just something that it's super important that we, uh, go at it, um, you know, methodically and, um, with a well thought out, uh, forward thinking plans that anticipate as many of the ramifications that we can come up with. I mean, I just, I just want to be in a position where we're doing the ready shooting game scenario. And we really need to, um, have thought out and, um, plan ahead. That's, that's where I'm at. And, uh, I'm still gathering information at this point, but it's, it's something that warrants discussion and a lot of, uh, conversation.
Well, you know, from my, my perspective, like I said, you know, I've, uh, been the, the oldest council person here today, or being here the longest at this point in time. Been listening to a lot of stuff during the past four or five years. And this is one thing that Mike brought up, you know, was the events that I'd never heard of. Uh, you know, there's, it sounds like there's some possibilities here. I think we just need further discussion. Uh, one thing that I think that we need to, um, consider, of course, and Mike, you might have a question on this. I know that the city of Colorado Springs does not have, I don't know if they have any actual marijuana retail, uh, units up there, uh, but they have consumption clubs. And I'm just trying to figure out, we being that, we have so many units out there already. We have twenty some odd, you know, people that have our units throughout the city. And I think we're going to need to get input from those business owners on maybe their impact. On if we were to go down this path, and what that impact would be to them. What, who, you know, what's, what do I think, I, I think it would only, it would only be right to ask, get some questions from them. The other thing that I have, of course, going down that path would be, how many do we want to have if we go down that path at that point? I just don't want to get into having an unlimited like amount like we have today. Uh, where, uh, the other big question has been in my mind is the liability to an establishment uh, when someone, for some reason or other, comes in pretty well inebriated already and then gets the opportunity to buy, uh, buy more and gets intoxicated, intoxicated, goes out and drives and hurts somebody. So I think there's, we have to discuss. That's just going to be a discussion item down the road. Uh, you know, we're going to have to look at the benefit to, not only, like I said, to the establishment, but also to the city. And like I said, the last item I had was asking current license holders, you know, for input. Uh, so I believe that it's, it warrants more discussion at this time. We're going to have to get into, into this probably a lot deeper. Um, that's where I'm at with this.
Mayor, may I please ask a few questions?
Sure, go right in.
Danielle, hey. Okay, thank you. So can I ask you, Danielle and Hank? Um, how many communities in, how many municipalities in the state of Colorado are allowing, let's say, retail marijuana hospitality and sales businesses? I asked, I think, before about the consumption club, but the, the retail marijuana, so either restaurants that provide for marijuana consumption or other businesses, do you know approximately how many municipalities there are?
No, I don't think any, uh, I'm assuming you're talking about the retail marijuana business and sales model and that I'm not aware of any that currently allow it, but maybe we may not just have any licenses of that, be honest. That's what I think, know of any?
Uh, yeah, no, I don't. Just, just in, in the area that I cover, it's the, the two that are parts, that's all I know about.
Uh, Mike, do you have, Mike, do you have any? Go ahead.
No, no, go ahead, Mike.
Um, no, I, I really don't have much to add. I'm, I'm, I think we need to explore this. Um, some of my concerns is policing, um, knowing when somebody's Some of my concerns is policing, knowing when somebody's had too much, when they can drive, you know, just, just all that, who can go into this facility or, you know, and not. I, I don't know, the old secondhand smoke, there has to be a filtration.
Yeah. Okay.
You know, that, let me ask one question, and I'll turn it back over to you two. I want to ask Mike something. Being that you already have a consumption, or consumption clubs in Colorado Springs, what kind of protection do you have for employees, for their, the people that come in to consume? Certainly, they're not in the same area where they're not protected and they're inhaling all of the smoke. Can you kind of give us some information?
I just want to make a correction. I don't own clubs in the Springs. I know club owners in the Springs. I own Colorado Cannabis Tours and Club Packs in Haight, Denver area-based. You know, I, I think, you know, you're asking an intuitive question there, and I'm gonna just give you the most honest answer that I can. Um, the driver, okay, that's, that's one that's always on people's minds, the driver of this club. How is he not getting intoxicated with secondhand smoke? Well, we went through great things, the design of our vehicle, to make sure that that can't happen, separate air handling systems for the front and back chambers, exhaust fan in the back chambers, make sure it doesn't get too smoky and pour through. And we even actually did mine, you know how like in a limo, you've got a window that opens between you and the driver? Well, we eliminated the window, we put a TV screen there, and if you want to talk to the driver, you buzz him on Intercom system, can actually see his face and everything. So, I mean, this is a hundred and twenty thousand dollar bill now of a Mercedes Sprint, okay? That's what we did on that particular model. When it comes to the guy who's back there with guests, you have to understand that the people who are taking these jobs, not only are they enthusiastic to have them, but they're enthusiastic to have these jobs because they are cannabis consumers themselves. Now, does that mean they're actually just consuming the cannabis with guests? No, we forbid that, and it was used as a gold standard in this bill, wherein it's not allowed, one of the stakeholders who pushed through this legislation at the state level. So, it's not allowed in the bill. And I'm just going to try to lighten this spell of myth, and that myth is secondhand smoke itself. The amount of secondhand smoke one would have to intake to actually become inebriated is nearly impossible to do. So, yes, they are back there with the guests, and they want to be, and they enjoy it. That's, that's what I'll tell you about the people who, who serve in these particular sets, that is. That being said, there's gonna be a lot of ventilation and air, so it shouldn't get too smoky in these facilities. That's also another requirement of the bill, airflow, the purification, that's, that's all built in.
Yeah, so that would- Do they have a plot with the Clean Air, Indoor Clean Air Act?
No, there's a waiver for the Clean Indoor Air Act, for IATP, and one of these licenses. In fact, this is very important for you guys to understand what you're-
There, there, Mike. So, local jurisdictions have the option to exempt these license types from the locals, but they actually have to accept, and it's up to each local jurisdiction if they do.
Okay, thank you, I appreciate it, Danielle. You guys, I guess, if, I mean, let me, let me ask this of Danielle and Hank. You have both been very accommodating, and I appreciate that. Are you like, are you like kind of solicitous, or not solicitous, I don't understand what you're, you know, the MED, but would you like to see models where municipalities start trying to do things like the retail marijuana hospitality and sales business license, and see how it goes? I mean, I'm kind of curious if you're, I don't know, does that, does that question make sense?
No, I'll start, and Hank, you can jump in if you want to. We're a regulatory body, so we can't really take one position over the, over the other. We just, you guys are gonna want to help you be successful if that is the case.
Okay. And Mike, and this is my last question, I think. Mike, you think there is support for this in municipalities like Trinidad if people were to have?
My thought is that it is the rule of the days of Colorado that we should embrace and then admit from this predictive legislation. I think it's a beautiful state, and there's a lot more to see than Denver, and the guests have been traditionally coming to Denver. That being said, you have a huge draw for Texas. You know, and I'll, two models that can be successful, and I know I run it the mouth, so I'll zip it up real quick here. I think you have a very successful restaurant model, where consumption was allowed, allowed instead of marijuana. I'm familiar with one in LA, that on their opening days did $5 million a day in business, just ridiculous business they did over there. In addition to that, you want to consider your hotels. That Clean Indoor Air Act waiver you have is pretty much the only way to make those hotels actually legally operating, because in the vaporizer bill that passed this last year as well, along across the valley, all forms of consumption in hotels, you know, as far as smoking goes, was made illegal. So the only way to continue those hotels is actually to pursue legal licensing, because you can't have smoking laws. And vaporizing is considered smoking, so there's really no way around it, other than creating this legislation. Even if you sent them outside, those people would be publicly consuming. It's a catch-22, it's either embrace legislation for the hotels, or the hotels have to stop basically doing what they're doing. And I'll wrap it up there.
Yeah, Mike, this is Phil. I got a question for you. Being that you have a mobile unit, is there any kind of air filtration that you have on your vehicle or vehicles to keep the smoke away, you know, when people smoke and it's filtered outside, that it doesn't, you know, pass to the public that's, you know, standing around walking the streets?
Uh, yes, we do have a hemp filter and a carbon filter installed. That said, we've never gotten word of any type of complaints of the smell of cannabis. The smell can have a pervasive effect right away, to be completely unattained. So we've never been privy to any smells. We do, we do take some precautions, I should.
I guess we would just need-
Phil, good all, that's a question.
All right, just, just-
I have a quick question.
Go ahead, Rusty.
So, so being a successful business owner in Denver, and taking the time out of your schedule to see what we're talking about, is it fair to say you would have interest with the already in-place plan that's operating, expanding to the Trinidad area?
I'm very open to it. I have a personal agenda as well, to see this business model spread. I feel that by allowing public consumption of cannabis, we take some of this stigma away that we still deal with. It may have made it to legalization, but it's still a stigmatized substance. And I certainly don't feel it should be. I feel alcohol is far more harmful, and we allow it absolutely everywhere in our society, without blinking. I'm, I'm open to some ideas. I think my main interest would probably be in a hotel. And then from the hotel, I would get a pulse on how many tours would be available to do others. That's, that's kind of what I, what I would be thinking about, to be honest.
I think it's something for city council to look at. If this is the direction we're gonna go, we can reach out to people that have an operating business plan working that we could look at and see if that would be something that would work for us. I mean, that opportunity is out there with these businesses operating.
No, I agree with you, Rusty, that we would look at some of the people that are already doing this, and maybe learn from them, and anything else that we might have. But then again, get the local establishments to weigh in on this, to see what their thoughts are. I think that would be important. Danielle, do you have any final thoughts for us?
No, I mean, Colorado has done so many great things around the regulating marijuana, and we definitely have shown the country the way they do it, and this is another opportunity and opportunity for you guys in the way that we can.
Well, you know, from day one, it seems like Trinidad's been kind of the guinea pig for a lot of the marijuana stuff. Sounds like this may be one more thing that we're gonna look at. That's the way I look at it.
We'd like to refer to it as the lab.
Okay.
The lab.
Mike, do you have, Mike, do you have any other questions or concerns?
I do not, there. Thank you.
Okay, I want to thank Hank, and I want to thank Danielle and Mike for being on tonight, and kind of guiding us through and giving some questions that we've, some answers to some of the questions that we've had. So, thanks again, and if we go down this path, we may have to call you up again. Wally, thank you, Wally, thank you for putting together the panel for us, and like I said, we may have to have them back again.
Thank you, Paul.
Yeah, thanks a lot.
Thank you for saying meet time.
Okay, okay, let's, let's go on to other agenda items, and just to let council know, Mike and I sat down earlier this week, or last week, and we went through some of the upcoming work session items, and we kind of categorized them as what we felt were probably one, two, three, four, and five. And of course, the one tonight was the consumption clubs, and that was one thing that we had originally on our list. But then from there on, we're talking about streamlined billing. I'll let Mike explain that in a minute, and then probably short-term rentals. And then the next thing we want to try to do is, we have an upcoming budget, and what I'd like to do before the budget starts, is that we, as council, could have a work session to see if there are any particular priorities that we, as council people, would like to have injected into the budget for the next year. Murals would be a major item that we're talking about at some point, and Les, you've talked about that a bit. And the last item at this point would be, and is broadband. I think that, I'm kind of illiterate on a lot of this techy stuff, and I think it would be good to maybe try to find someone to come in and explain broadband to council as a whole from A to Z. That would kind of give us from, you know, what does it do, you know, how do we move forward with this? What does it take to bring broadband in to expand? What are the costs? You know, what are we looking at? So I think that broadband would be something that we need to look at down the road. So with that, I'm gonna ask Mike, what did you, give council your meaning of your streamlined billing?
Thank you, Mayor and Council. So, if you recall, we had a work session with Cheryl regarding our, our utility billing and how people were, because of our billing, were falling way behind. You know, they get forty-five days, and then they get a notice, and next thing you know, they're, they're two months behind, three months behind, and they can't make it up. So we wanted to streamline that process. Well, along comes the virus, and we're directed by the governor's executive orders that we cannot basically do anything with, with any of the utilities. We're, we've got some people that are helping with that, and they're coming in for, you know, their, their budget billing to try and catch up and sign agreements. We've got some that are taking advantage of it. So, as the virus eases up, and we try to figure out how to help the people afford what we have through ARZAC money, through setting up payment plans, we move forward with streamlining that process. So, that's, that's one thing, Mayor. And then, the other thing is, the, the discussion that I want to have, Mayor mentioned, budget-wise, would be project lists for our CIP funds, you know, our, their wish list, and I'd like to have the staff and council interaction to prioritize that, along with our marijuana funds that, you know, every quarter were coming up. This last one was tough, we, because of COVID. Cheryl got the sales tax report today, and she reported to me that we did better than I projected. Thank God, I'm horrible at projecting. We had to accept it. A lot of things I projected to fall down didn't fall down as much. We had a lot of things, marijuana sales, which was, that was huge. The grocery was still huge. I don't know if that's still, these are April numbers, I don't know if they were still holding. And restaurants, hotels came down. But overall, I'll give the exact numbers from Cheryl and my girl, give you the good news, because I gave you the bad news on my projections. That's, and just, just moving forward with the plan on how we, we get all on the same page with how we spend our CIP monies and marijuana project monies.
The only other thing that I think that we're gonna have to have a discussion on, I just thought about this, Mike, was, we talked about, currently at the landfill, we don't have any charge, any fees for dumping trees. So I think that would be another line item that we could probably just throw in with one of these other work session days.
We definitely, Tom is, is looking at that, that as we speak, or not as we speak, but it may be, work in a way. But also, what I'd really like is to get, you know, input from the rest of the council. I mean, we threw these things together, but there's gotta be more ideas out there for work sessions than what you'd like to straightforward. As far as staff, ours is kind of work-driven, whatever, you know, is happening at the time. We need council's direction, we bring their work sessions. But I'd love to get council's input.
Yeah, I keep asking, you know, in some of our meetings, that if anybody on council has anything in particular that they would like to discuss in a work session, please, you know, forward it to either me or Mike, and on an email, and then we could throw it in with the, where it could fall in line, and how important it is, how soon we have to look at that. So, please let us know as soon as you can, so we can kind of get an idea how we're going forward with work sessions. I do have one other item I wanted to discuss with you tonight, and Karen, this might be something you might be able to, if you've been reading about it. Senate Bill 215, that's the health insurance affordability enterprise fee. Have you been keeping track of what that's all about?
I do not do health insurance. I'm a specialist. I do just a little. My husband is a health, he's one of the only licensed agents in Trinidad to sell a vertical care asset. So if you would like to talk to him, I would be more than happy to tell him to get ahold of you.
Well, just, just, I have, I have a sheet here. I just got this in yesterday evening or this morning from Debbie, and it's a fee that, I'll read this part of it. It says, taxing healthcare makes healthcare more expensive. Period 20, Senate Bill 20-215 does not aim to refund, does not aim to fund the reinsurance program. It aims to collect significant revenue from employer-sponsored health insurance plans to subsidize expansive individual market programs with little oversight. So basically, it says, who's going to pay the tax? And what it is, is, just like it said, is the individuals that have health insurance would be paying the tax on that. So that's, that's kind of concerning.
Well, it's really concerning, because I haven't seen anything about it. But when you said something about employer-sponsored health care, that, that rings a bell, because that's the thing. So what they're saying is, if your employer provides health insurance, your employer's gonna be surtrared.
Right, that's exactly what they're, and what they were doing is, they were asking me to sign on a letter opposing it, and a lot of the organizations are opposing this at this point in time. So just a little bit of information I have just given you. Does council have any, does council have any heartache for me to go ahead and say we stand in opposition, or would you like to hear more about it? Or would you like to hear more about it?
I'd like to know more about it.
Uh, what I could do is when I get home tonight, um, I will send you what I received. Um, now I've got to send it to Mike if he wants to distribute that to everybody. Why don't I do that? And then you guys can, you guys can get back, you guys can get back to Mike and tell him yea or nay. And then I can call him tomorrow and say we are, um, in opposition as well.
I'll, I'll do some research too, tonight. What's the bill number?
Senate Bill 20-215.
Okay.
Maybe what I'll do when I'm done here, maybe I'll just go down here and I'll have, um, um, Audra copy this and just ship, ship it off to everybody. How's that sound? That might be easier.
Yeah, that sounds good.
Okay.
Put it on the drive?
Yep. Uh, does council have anything else you want to bring forward?
Mayor, I was wondering, what was, uh, there, you said future discussion on broadband?
Well, I...
Was that going to be a tale?
Well, I, I think we just, you know, for myself, I'm not sure how many other councils people really thoroughly understand broadband, how it's brought into a community, what the, you know, pretty much everything from A to Z. Uh, I would like to get a little better, a lot more understanding, uh, what it will do to our community, uh, for our community.
Now, I have two, uh, two, uh, IAPs that are broadband providers in town.
Uh, Mike, you want to, uh, expand on that? And just give us some information? Is it already here? How do we utilize it or...
It's, it's here.
We have, uh, uh, CCOM and, um, I'm not sure.
Comcast, uh, CCOM and, and Quest, I'll call if I have a broadband from, uh, IEP.
Okay, but here's the question is that, you know, we're not alone in this, just the city of Trinidad? Because I know like, um, CCOM is only in part of town. It's not all over town, if I'm correct. And, uh, you know, the thing about it is people, I think the county would have to get involved with this as well. Simply because if we're going to attract people to come to this area, a lot of them are not going to want to live in town. They may want to live in the outskirts of town or one of the other areas. So, uh, that's what I'm looking at as to how do we expand this service?
I see. Um, if I may, I...
Go ahead.
In an appropriate, um, I might have some information to pass on. Where, uh, there's a process currently being, um, in place to bring, um, fiber internet to Primero that would be a good place to, uh, start from. It could definitely increase outside of city, um, broadband and IEP access. Do that mean, and I know some, uh, state potentially federal one that they use towards that. That might be a good means to, um, you know, step in and help with that in additional grant writing.
Yeah, and the question is, like I said, I know that there's been talk about that going up to Primero. But, you know, would it go up to Boncarbo? Would it go into San Fe Trail Ranches? Would it go into Trinidad Lake Ranches? How far up through Primero? Will it go up to Stonewall? Those are the type of things that, because these are areas that I think are, um, that people would be looking at. So how far would this be extended to? Those are the questions that I have.
Okay.
So anyway.
Um, Mayor, if I may, I have a couple of other items.
Sure.
If you're on the immediate extended list board, but just to let you know, um, the CARESAC coronavirus money that, uh, the governor, um, dispersed 275 million to cities. Uh, what I reported last was that each county is getting, uh, funding. And the county had a meeting to, to disperse, um, the money goes through the counties and each incorporated city within the county has to come to a agreement, a memorandum of understanding or collaborative agreement with the county. Um, we have a 30-day window to get that done. Uh, Mr. Doran Kep and, and Ms. Nelson, uh, county attorney are working on a model that, um, other communities have used where it's split up 55% to the county and 45% to the rest of these municipalities. And the reason I'm told for that is the counties have to include the, uh, health department within that, uh, their, their share. Um, that being said, I don't know if we'll have something before our June 16th council meeting or so. We may have to, because of the 30-day window, we may have to have, the 30-day expires on July 7th. That will be too late. That's our next regular meeting, our first regular meeting in July. So we may have a special meeting. We'll just let council know that. Uh, once I give that, we'll get it out to you for review. Um, the second thing is the county, uh, attorney has emailed me and said, county is considering a second variance to the order for movie theaters, bars and taverns, and group gatherings for things like the county fair, rodeos, graduation. They're considering a variance for that. And she asked if the city had anything to add. Uh, awful while knowing that the governor is pretty much, uh, releasing things fairly rapidly as we move forward. So they, they may or may, may not submit it. But I don't know if council has anything that they want to consider, if you could just add to me.
Swimming pools, I'm getting a lot of people asking about, are my kids going to be able to swim this summer? I'd like to see swimming pools in there. I think Rattown opened up their indoor aquatic center today.
Swimming pools already included.
Is it?
Yeah.
Swimming pools have got a 50%, uh, um, opening. I talked to Marty, our, our director up there, on how, how that looks, what staffing looks like, if we have to hire, uh, that was part of, uh, my projection was, uh, not to hire any seasonals up to swimming pool because I didn't think we could open it. Marty, uh, kind of, um, went to, uh, uh, his contractor who was going to do the ceiling of the pool. He said, he said he could, he could put them off. It, it wouldn't have to happen, but we'd have to figure out how, how we staff and how we get, uh, people. So, yeah, we've been getting the calls too for swimming pools. Yep, thank you.
Hey, Mike, uh, what kind of budgetary is the, uh, concerns would we have if we, we brought those seasonal workers back? I mean, is the swimming pool operation a muddy, a big muddy loser anyway? I mean, do we have the capacity financially to open that pool?
Well, it's, sure, it's, it's based on, on sales stats and they do get some concessions, uh, but, uh, it's an amenity we provide for, for the city. It's definitely not a moneymaker. Um, but, um, it would be shortened by the fact that we would have already had, uh, our three, four weeks of, of staff already there. So we've saved that amount. Um, sales tax are, like I said, they're, they're coming in better than expected. Um, but I, I, I talked with Marty today, looked at that, see what it would take, how long? Is it worth the swimming season to bring people on? Are those training lifeguards still around or did they go and get other jobs? And then we have to train new lifeguards? It's, uh, it's a whole process. So, uh, good question. I don't know the answer.
One more thing.
Sure.
John, as far as that discussion on, uh, that we need to have on the dispersment of money, could we just do a work session ahead of our next council meeting? Just do the meeting at 5:00? Would an hour be enough and then just go right into our council meeting?
It's very possible if we get, uh, memorandum of understanding. The county has to get with five other communities and us to, us to agree on the dispersment. But, uh, that would be great if we could do that.
All right.
Okay, council have anything else?
I have one, one thing and I'm sorry, everyone.
That's okay, go ahead.
I see your head shaking. Um, I read in, excuse? I, um, I read it in, uh, one of the papers, in the article, um, I don't know how many of you saw it, but it's basically the, um, the, the verbiage says that, uh, we agreed on a plan that's against, uh, Colorado, uh, sunshine laws. Um, I, I, I don't believe that can be true. Um, it has to do with, uh, our voting process to, um, to elect the replacement, um, city council person. I, I, um, have concern that's a pretty serious charge. I, I don't think seven of us would have voted to hide anything from the public. Um, Captain said, I, I would like to see this addressed. I don't know the next steps.
Les, Les, go ahead.
Absolutely.
To all, to all, thank you, Mayor. To all of you know, I sent you a copy of that article today, by the way. And, you know, I, I, uh, so if, if you want to look at it, you can't. It was an article in the Werf News World. And Mr. Knowles said that we had adopted a air quote secret procedure for selecting, um, Anthony Matei's replacement, which is completely untrue. It is, it is not correct in any way, shape, or form. This is a procedure that is absolutely permissible, allowable, does not violate sunshine laws, is in no way secret. The only thing it does is it affords council members a brief period of people not knowing who it is you have voted for. But they will find out. I mean, there will be a court request and you will, uh, have your, your votes. Your votes, your votes are going to be, they're going to have your name on your ballot. You're going to sign your ballot. All of you have to guess the number of votes. So there's nothing secret about it. Um, with all due respect for our friend, Bill Knowles, he was a complete mischaracterization of the procedure. He also cited a, a Colorado appellate opinion. I don't doubt for a second, second that secret ballot proceedings have been thrown out by the Colorado Court of Appeals and Colorado Supreme Court. But this is not a secret procedure in any way. And how we got that from our previous discussions has been obvious. So thank you, Council Williams, and thank you, Mayor and Council. Any questions you may have, I'm here.
No, I, I think that was pretty well self-explained, you know, when we went through the process of, either in the work session even this last week, uh, when we determined how the process was going to move forward, going, going to move forward. So I, I think it's pretty clear. Go ahead.
I, I'm sorry, Mr. Mayor. I did not mean to interrupt you. I just feel that, uh, I'm doing a lot of interpreting here, I'll admit that. But I, I really feel that, uh, when in red, um, in context, the article basically says, hey, seven city council members in Trinidad decided to pull the rule over the I's. So six, I think, yes, six. But, I mean, and, and that's, that's absolutely not correct. I, I don't want the perception in public to be that we are changing our, um, position, procedure, units article. Um, our position and procedure is not changed. It's the article that needs to change.
Uh, Les, I would, you know, Les, if you want to, if you want to reach out, I'm going to say, reach out to Bill and, uh, you know, clarify him on this, you know, because, you know, that's the problem that I have sometimes with, you know, some of the articles that are written that are mischaracterized and it puts, sheds a bit, a bad light on, uh, on council or individuals on, uh, something that was discussed.
Right, right.
Okay.
More than I have to do, I can ask him to do what you have to track.
And, uh, like I said, tonight, take a look at that information on Senate Bill 215. Now, we're going to be done here in a minute. And, uh, I'll give it to Audra and she'll pass it on. And if you would get back to either Audra or Mike, it doesn't matter who. And then they can let me know by the morning and I could, uh, tie on and, and say we are also in opposed, opposition to Senate Bill 215. Uh, with that, that being said, uh, good job tonight, guys, and, uh, good night. Thank you for everything.